See the interlokal.
At their will.
So mostly for P.O.
I mean, this is going to be the same thing. Yeah. Making sure.
Becky, are you ready? Okay, it is 9:00 a.m. I will call the meeting, this meeting of the Lincoln County. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meetings Act. First order of business today is to open with prayer, and Commissioner Brunz, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. Join me if you would, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, with thanksgiving in our hearts. Lord, we thank you for the touch of wisdom, the gift of knowledge and discernment, Lord, as we go about the work of the constituents and the people here in Lincoln County that we work to serve. Lord, we ask that you just guide us in our meetings in deliberation today to make decisions that are in the best interests of the communities that we live in and that we represent and that are pleasing in your eye, Lord. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you provide. We thank you for the bit of precipitation that parts of the county received this past couple days. We ask that you just continue to provide those blessings as we move forward throughout the year. Lord, we ask that you just continue to put your shield of protection across those that work hard to serve Lincoln County, from our first responders, our medical personnel, our law enforcement. Lord, we also ask continued protection for those that work to protect the freedoms that we enjoy in our military, both stateside and abroad. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, next order of business is approve minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on March 20, 2023.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of Board of Commissioners, March 20, 2023.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There's noticed about 11 or 12 misspellings of my name. If we could just get those corrected. Most of them are in the recording of all the votes, so. Yep. No worries.
Did you change your name to Smith?
Check spelled like birds a lot better than birds.
Okay, with that, those changes in place, are there any other comments, discussions? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next order of business is to consider the following. First, claims and treasurers receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the claims and treasure receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I had a question about the, in 5% in lieu from Dawson Public Power. Is that yearly, annually? Notice there's Hershey, Maxwell, and Brady.
I had a question as well when you get done with that one.
Okay. Tidy little sums. I'm just curious. Morning, Tristan.
Good morning.
Glad you could join us.
Glad to be here.
Try to be on time next week.
I'll do my best.
And put your fine in my cup over there. We'll collect it after that.
Good, good.
Last man in brings donuts, right?
Oh, Commissioner Williams, I thought that was your, your job.
Yeah, I keep forgetting. Just like you.
Yeah. It'll happen.
Airline, car line.
5% gross revenue for several line items.
Airline and car lines. You'd be like the railroad and airlines.
This was the FPD also. They had one on there for Custer, if I'm not mistaken, and they worked for the various villages around Lake and Cat.
Is that for the facilities that they own, I'm guessing?
To be very quite honest with you, I don't remember seeing it in the past, so that doesn't mean anything. I just don't recall it.
Okay.
You would. I would think you'd be on the right track due to the fact that the one from Sutherland is exponentially larger than others, so the gentleman station, of course, would be, it is summed up based on valuation.
Of structures, of towers, and such.
Substations, so.
My guess is, rather than, I mean, I don't know why it doesn't stick with me of seeing those before. It just doesn't.
Sounds good. Any, you have a question?
I do, since we're on that. And our law enforcement revenues, curious about, we've, you know, this is a hot topic with the fire thing. Village of Wallace is, is a number larger than the village of Brady. I wondered if that was pro rata. It's on the page, first page of revenues.
I believe those are negotiated between the sheriff and the individual villages on how many times they want them to actually make a pass through the village.
Based on repetition of patrol.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you. Perfect. I answered that.
Perfect. And it looks like we have some funds coming from highway and bridge program from the state, which should be showing up.
600,000.
For our use. Okay, any other questions? Comments? We had a motion and a second, right? Roll call, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Walton, is that something that you could make a call or check on, is that in lieu of? I mean, it makes sense that it would be, but I just, I just don't remember seeing those people pay in lieu of before, so.
Sure.
Thank you. That way at least know what we're getting money for. Look a gift horse in the mouth, but.
All were pretty appropriate. I'd like to get a question to get an answer on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next order of business, receive and order filed the return of sale of real property from the March 6, 2023 public tax sale. And it does look like a very significant group of affidavits from Alex Rashilo in front of us. Tell me what we are to do with this information.
Receive an order filed.
Simple process of acknowledging it and accepting it. And if you take some of your Pfizer stock and equity data, you can start buying these to link with property taxes and make better interest.
Nice thought.
Plus, you're not going there.
Okay, what is your pleasure, colleagues?
Chairman, I would move to receive and order file the return of sale of real property from the March 6, 2023 public tax sale. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next order of business is receive and order filed the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we receive and order file the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $6,145.24 and $3,289.66.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, the next order of business is authorizing the chairman to sign an interlocal agreement with Morrell County for inmate housing. Sheriff, I assume this is very similar to the other interlogals we have signed? Is that correct?
Yeah. I didn't compare. They did something different. It's a way to refuse.
Tyler, did you look at this?
I glanced through it this morning. It looks substantially similar to the other ones that were signed.
Okay, is the rate 55? Is that what we've been negotiating for the other?
Yeah, I think this is the beginning of a wave on it. If I remember correctly.
Okay.
An increase.
Looks like there's three, three different levels depending on.
Now, remember, they were having an issue with this one for some reason, and they're paying a lot if they go west, and they're paying a hundred dollars a day, so they're wanting to do their business this way.
And you're okay with having their business come our way?
Yeah, we have it.
Oh, good. Colleagues, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing you to sign the interlocal agreement with Morrell County for inmate housing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, it makes no sense for them to go 30 miles when they can drive 155, does it?
Say 50 yards.
Yeah.
Welcome to government.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, next, excuse me, next item on our agenda is authorizing the chairman to sign a right-of-way application submitted by Hershey Cooperative Telephone Company. This, was this the one that we saw several maps of on email?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hughley and I are still working through the review of our fee structure and everything else, so.
And this was several sections of road on Miller School and West State Farm. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's some Hershey, Dickens, Walker. Yeah, it's a pretty extensive project.
Freaking map of the whole damn county.
They've been working in my neighborhood there, getting ready to lay fiber optic from Hershey to the south, to the southwest and southeast.
I do have a check for the permit, colleagues, or is your choice?
Just to reiterate, Jason, you are asking for more detail on, like GPS mapping on these now as you go? Are we going to tighten it up for you?
I did talk to.
Jason, would you come up here and please? Make sure we know who you are. Some of us do.
Jason Scholssling, County Highway Superintendent. Yes, I did talk to this applicant about providing some as-built, and right now, the way all of our permits read right now, they basically just give us a red line drawing of their as-built, so there's no requirement for any kind of, like CAD file or anything like that that's easily integrated with our GIS, so.
And that's one of the things that Commissioner Hughley and I are working on.
Becky, this is standing there. I'm waiting to consider the microphone scan.
Permit requirements.
Okay.
Pretty important, because that stuff's so expensive if we hit it.
Yeah, and I think that would be the only way to really integrate that into our GIS system easily would be to require that from the permitee, right, to provide a CAD file with the, send information to be able to load it up.
I'd like to see us strengthen that sooner than later, so you have better data.
Mm-hmm.
Will this line be on the road shoulder or in the right-of-way ditch?
It's going to be both.
Both?
So, yeah, it'll just depend on the location, the road type, and kind of our future plans, so we'll do the same thing. We'll set up a pre-construction meeting with them, go through all the locations, just to make sure we're all in agreement of where the line needs to go.
And depth of cable?
At least 42.
Okay, at least?
Yep.
Thank you for working with them on that.
Yep.
Thank you. Colleagues?
Chairman, I've moved to authorize your signature approving a right-of-way application submitted by Hershey Cooperative Telephone Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, it is 9:16. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First item on this agenda is approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on March 20, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held March 20, 23. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Pat, you're saying nothing.
Good morning, Pat.
That is, it's good. Thank you. I don't see anything from the county treasurer, so I guess.
Do we have something from you?
Hmm, you're just, you're just here to visit, just to see us, huh? Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization?
Probably need to bring that application from Grape Plains House back before us next week.
You'll get the 10-day notice on it.
Ah, that's right.
Do you have, do who, do you have the Grape Plains Act? We don't have it back.
Julie might have it. Do you need it?
Not the property tax, the motor vehicle.
Yeah, we got to give them the 10-day notice.
I figured.
That will be taking care of them? Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Okay, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, ladies.
You, you weren't keeping it between the lines?
So Zach might his own business and drive.
I wish I would have kept my maiden name, just for the record. It was a, and I wish we would have picked it back up. My dad was born with an O, his kids were not.
If some could find one, so. I, when I saw you at the stop sign, that's the farthest I've been to my house since I bought it. I got it off a little boy girl in the neighborhood, and I never left. So, I don't know, a second year. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think... I think it's gonna work its way out.
Chris, are you available tomorrow morning? With the, uh, report. I wonder if I should have... Are you busy tomorrow? I'm contemplating whether I should have you join Chris. Yeah, it's up to you. I just started thinking, I just got some...
Either way, it's fine with me.
See, Joe's dad passed away. What's happened? Over the weekend. Oh. He'd been having some health issues. No, again, we don't go out on air. I know, it wasn't starting out, but it's not getting any smaller.
It was that size fifteen minutes ago.
I know, that's what I was thinking. I was gonna say, you haven't got any of those big books in there for us to sign today. Make sure we take care of the Lincoln and Dawson County board.
Tristan, can you get a good side view of Brian there, do you?
I do, yeah. He was made for camera.
Is that your good side, Brian?
Me too. I'm not even sure I do that.
That's what Tristan tells me on Tuesday mornings. Glad I'm there, because I've got a face that's made for radio.
Okay, it is nine thirty. Our next item agenda is an update from the Nebraska Association of County Officials. Please. Tell us your name, your title, and sign in, please.
Good morning, as I'm signing in, my name is Elaine Menzel. I almost spelled it, because I'm used to doing that at the legislature, but, um... For those of you who don't know me, I am a legal counsel at the Nebraska Association of County Officials. I've been there for, um... I don't know if it's quite as long as Joe's been in county government, but it's been a while, so...
You're not even that old.
Um, I... I'm here today, um, I asked to be on the agenda, and I appreciate your willingness to have me be on your agenda. Last year, it was our goal to get to all of the Nebraska counties and visit them, and this year, it's our goal to get to county boards in each of the, um, counties. And so, so far, starting out, in part because it's a recess day at the legislature, that is, um, what takes up a good share of our time this time of year. With that said, I'll have a little bit of comments on some legislative bills later, but, um, primarily, I was going to tell you that I'm not here for any reason in particular to ask you anything, but then in the next breath, I'll... After I sign my name, I'll tell you about some meetings, and we'll hope that you'll attend those meetings. I'm sorry to be distracted, um... And I'm just gonna use the acronym NACO, which you are all familiar with. I had a folder of information, um, all set out in my car before I came, and then with the weather and not knowing if I was gonna be able to come for sure, because the roads were closed, and then they weren't, and then, et cetera, um, I failed to grab those. So I apologize, and please don't take my referring to my phone as being disrespectful, but just, um, I've got a... I was able to find a few notes, um, with respect to that. Some, as I had, um, indicated, I was gonna jump back to now asking you to do some things, and what that would be is we hope that you will take advantage of some educational opportunities and come to some meetings that NACO, um, offers for, uh, individuals to attend, and one that is even this week and here, so hopefully fairly convenient, and you will be able to attend, is the West Central District meeting, and that's at Thursday at the Mid Plains Community College. My guess is it's at nine o'clock, because they... That's generally when they start, but I didn't look at a specific agenda. Then I'll jump to June, which actually, the way this year is going, is going fairly quickly, so it will be here pretty soon. In June seventh, we've got a County Board of Equalization workshop. Tyler, you may be interested in that, because we are offering three and a half hours of CLE for attorneys, so that might be something that you might be interested in attending. Also, beginning on that day is County Board Workshop. Those timeframes are not conflicting, so you would be able to go to both sessions. And then, the next day is also County Board Workshop. There are some sessions, I'm not gonna remember them all, but I know there's jail standards, and I know there's, um, personnel, and some other types of, uh, they'll talk legislation and some of those other issues of importance. The Clerk's Workshop is also June, and both of those are in Kearney. And the Clerk's is June fourteenth through sixteenth, and then, um, forecasting a little later into the future is the West Central District meeting in the fall, and that's September twenty-eighth. Then...
And where is that, May the twenty-eighth?
To be determined.
To be determined.
Yeah, generally, it's Ogalala, and, uh, here are where the West Central, um, end up being. With that said, given Ogalala has some great significance coming up to us, so, um, I don't believe it'll be ready quite yet, given that groundbreaking's just June second, or is what I'm understanding of this year for the Ogalala locations, so we're looking forward to that, and then rumor here... Rumor tells me that it's going to be roughly eighteen months, a year to eighteen months for, um, when we can expect to start, um, being in the facility. And, um, I suspect you've all heard about that, and, um, we're looking forward to it and hope to be having some events, including district meetings and perhaps some workshops and those types of things, as well as, uh, greater Western presence with respect to NACO, MIBs, and some of our other partners. So then, going back to some events that are coming up, the National NACO, they're going to be, um, holding their conference in Austin, Texas, July twenty-first through twenty-fourth, and then skipping back to Nebraska NACO, we are going to be holding our legislative conference in West Point, and for those of you who don't know, um, we do those within the, um, NACO district where the past president is from, and Judy Munsonberger is from West Point, so that's why it would be held there, and then, um, the annual conference will once again be at the new conference center at the Eunice, um, in Kearney, and that will be December thirteenth through fifteenth, and, uh, Wednesday through Friday.
When was the legislative conference again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't even think I gave it the date, but I think I just mentioned the location, October twelfth. Then, with respect to all of these educational opportunities I've mentioned to you, NACO does have a county board certification program. They... If you, within two years, complete thirty credit hours, you could receive certification for that. It's voluntary, so, um, that's important to know. Through the year, we'll do Institute of Excellence and some other types of programs as well that would be online opportunities, so that's a possibility. If you've not done so already and would like to keep up to date on what NACO was up to, we encourage you to sign up for our electronic newsletter and legislative updates. That will help you keep apprised of the things that are occurring. Here's the section where I talk about NACO, National NACO non-members, and I see Lincoln County is a member, so we're pleased to have you be a member, and, um, for those who weren't members, we would go through last year with respect to how many ARPA dollars and, um, dollars with respect to other types of grant programs. And the reason that we did that is to show that their membership would essentially pay for itself within, you know, a hundred years or going out, because their dues were so minimal in comparison to the benefits that National NACO was bringing to the rural counties, and, um... And, uh, through the years that I've been there, I see that there's a greater focus on bringing our voices to the national level, and so it's nice to see that that, uh, viewpoint is there. Now, I'm going to skip to some legislation, which perhaps you have... It's one of those things that there's not a lot to report, which is both good and bad. It's good from the respect when you're playing defense, and I will tell you, we're playing defense this year on a lot of legislation, so... While it's frustrating to not see the legislature doing, um, or passing legislation, it... And through the years, it's a way different, um, environment than I've ever observed. With that said, uh, one of the key pieces of legislation that we follow is the inheritance tax, um, legislation, and LR twenty-three CA is one of those pieces of legislation. That bill was... Or, it's not a bill, it's a constitutional amendment, um, that would have prohibited the, um, um, levying of an inheritance tax for either the state or counties, and, um... Or the local level, I should say, so not just counties, but anyway. With that said, that legislation was not prioritized, and it had a late hearing, so it's not anticipated that anything will happen with it, plus the timeframe of where we're at in the legislative session, and nothing else really moving forward. In conjunction with the legislative, uh, measures coming forward related to inheritance tax, NACO this year conducted a third-party, uh, study. They hired a consultant, for lack of a better description, to conduct a study of, um, five hundred voters that are random and kind of survey what their, uh, impression was on the inheritance tax, and it actually ended up being fairly favorable for counties with respect to, they view, um, the local-level government, meaning counties, as more favorable than their state representatives, and also, when it came time to having a little bit of background about what inheritance tax does and the basis for what would occur in the event it were repealed or not, um, uh... Additional funding to replace revenue, that's what I'm trying to say, then they were not willing to have that happen, so they were more opposed to them removing that. With that said, there's one other, uh, piece of legislation that does have, um, well, actually, there's two. One is more technical, and it relates to reporting requirements for treasurers, but the other one is Senator Erdman's epic bill, and that would repeal pretty much every type of, um, well, no, it would repeal every type of tax. type of, well, no, it would repeal every type of tax and create a replacement taxing system in terms of a consumption tax. With respect to the consumption tax, I don't understand it well, but some analysis that I've seen indicates that it would be as perhaps as much as 20% less than the revenues that we take in currently. And it's not, it's like income tax, sales tax, property tax, inheritance tax, and pretty much every tax you can think of. With that said, there's probably other legislation that may be of interest to you, but I'll go ahead and open it up to questions you may have of me, and just once again, please know I appreciate your time, and I, like I said, I had the business card to hand out to you and that type of stuff, but Becky knows where to get hold of me, and I appreciate her working with me to have me on the schedule.
Great, thank you for your update. Any questions?
Elaine, it's good to see you again.
Thank you, Chris.
And no worries about not having the information, and we all have your contact, so. I just want to say thank you for really pushing, as you're making the tours around the state, all 93 counties, pushing the membership to the National Association of Counties, sitting on a policy steering committee there. It really opened up my eyes to the value that that organization, the larger organization, what they do to provide as far as advocating for counties. And I hope that we can really relay to the handful of counties that aren't members, the additional voice that we will get, should we get 100% participation, and how important that is for advancing at a federal level, things that are important to us, and particularly rural, rural Nebraska and our rural counties. So, thank you for that.
Well, and thank you, Chris, for acknowledging that, and definitely that emphasizes the importance and the messaging that need to convey to those others. The good news is that it's not a lot, as I recall, perhaps 15, under 20, but it, but with that said, it's still, we're so close that we would get a lot more benefits if we were able to be 100%.
Elaine, on that, on that topic, some of your county boards should be reminded that because of the National NACO, that freed up this ARPA funding and gave us a great deal of latitude we did not have.
Yeah.
And they were key in that.
Yes.
They were absolutely key in leading that, that effort.
Yes.
And without that, I think a lot of counties probably would have just parked money for four years and sent it back.
I think that's a valid point, and I think that, that prior to that freeing up, as you, as we're describing it, there was a lot of counties that were struggling with, how is this even a possibility for me to use and stuff, so, and so-
Including ours.
Well, yeah, I mean-
Everyone is in the same boat.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when it comes to the farm bill, for instance, the voice that National Association of Counties has as far as advocating for good things in that farm bill and keeping fluff and stuff out.
Waters of the US.
Waters of the US, those are few chapters that they work hard on, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's going to get kicked back from-
Yeah, and, and I'm-
Implementation of the expansion of President Biden's nearest action.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
No, no, it's fine.
I think about, I think every time somebody says something, I think some-
Just brainstorming.
With that said, there, our website does have a lot of this valuable information, and we have references to National Association as well, and for instance, ARPA and other topics. Okay, and I also failed to bring up the opioid settlement, and there is a second round of that and an April 18 deadline to do opt-in provisions and that type of thing. So, that's, that's separate and apart from the National Association, and yet, National Association has been valuable with respect to knowing how to, or, you know, assisting with some ideas on terms of those types of things, so.
Elaine, on a practical point on meetings, I know NACO made a valiant effort to stream various meetings during the COVID process and that kind of involved, we still struggle there, I think, to have that technology to, for folks to be able to remotely participate in some of these workshops, and I'm hoping that you can convince John we need to get stronger with that technology.
I will be glad to relay those comments.
Because we've got a lot of, you know, outlying folks that are 250 miles from, from a meeting, or 220, and farther, of course, if you're in a panel, but it's hard for people to get to all those meetings, and they want to take in, you know, an hour or 90-minute session, and if we could have NACO strengthen that ability for technology to enable us to participate, that'd be very, very helpful.
Thank you again for those comments, and I will relay those. There was a leadership institute, and I don't know, perhaps you saw that that was being offered at district, or following district meetings, and so that ended up being shifted to Zoom for purposes of trying to get more people involved and stuff, so.
Yeah, that would be very helpful for those that can't make it to the full meeting.
Sure.
Add a few interesting topics that would be very, that'd be very helpful.
And, and they're recording then some of those sessions, which becomes valuable as well, so, so, well.
Any other questions or comments for Elaine? Elaine, we thank you very much for coming out and being with us and giving us the update from NACO.
Well, I do really appreciate your time, I appreciate being able to come to your courthouse. Okay, just a side note on my background, I've been to all 50 states, I've been to all 93 counties, but now my goal is to get to all 93 county courthouses, so by this summer, it will be 72, so.
Well, we are very proud of our courthouse, and thank you for coming to visit us.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you.
Safe travels, man.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is discuss and consider tort claim filed by Sybil Yerling. This is a claim that I received a phone call in regards to. I'm not sure what the process is going forward, but a little bit of update on what this situation involves. The intersection of Old Highway 30 and East State Farm is where a lot of the, well, where a multitude of dirt hauling trucks make a turn. And Jason Schultz, Road Superintendent, and I noticed back in January, I think it was, that the sharp turn being made at that intersection by the trucks was eroding away a lot of the dirt at that inside intersection. We made the decision to fill that in with some aggregate, and that helped a whole great deal as far as preserving the asphalt on both sides of that 90-degree angle. But as trucks turned, they kicked the crushed granite out onto the asphalt road, and this tire had a unfortunate meeting with that hunk of granite on the asphalt. So, and sliced the tire, and looks like a new tire was purchased. Colleagues, what is your pleasure? Tyler, how do we normally handle these? Do we just simply turn these over to our insurance, or I can't recall the process?
The board just formally takes no action on it. We can turn it over to insurance, but I can't imagine that they're going to do anything with it. There's no obvious liability. I'm sympathetic with the person who had to purchase a new tire, but at the same time, anything could have kicked that rock out on the road.
One remedy that has been fairly successful since this incident is, is that Van Kirk's have made a concerted effort to use a road sweep to push that material on a fairly regular basis back to where it's supposed to be, and I'm not familiar with any other situations like this, as I drive that intersection multiple times each week, so I can't keep an eye on it myself, but it looks as though they've been doing a pretty good job. Would you agree, Jason?
Yeah.
So, I believe in tort claims such as this, that's what we have done, is turn them back to our insurance company.
Go ahead.
Yeah, right.
The board simply formally takes no action on them. There are some legal ramifications for taking action on them. For purposes of preserving this individual's ability to turn around and perhaps sue the county if they don't get a resolution that they like, that simply accelerates their clock for doing so, the board takes a formal action. So, what they have done up to this point is simply no action in the item. That starts a six-month window where they can withdraw the claim and then file something against the county if they so choose. But I would, I would hesitate to recommend that the board take any real formal action on it simply because then you're going to have to start paying out on all these. And not all of them are legitimate, and I'll leave that.
I suppose from, from my thought process, if we put the crushed granite where it was crushed granite supposed to go, I don't know how we would be liable unless we actually went out there and took the granite and put it on the road, and how do you prove that? So, I empathize with them, though.
Yeah, I empathize as well, and I guess in hindsight, I wish we would have maybe taken a different remedy, but this remedy was very successful in doing what we needed to have done, but wish I could have foreseen that this was going to be a problem, and we would have got in touch with the trucking company and had them clear up this mess a little sooner than we did. So, Tyler, you, what would be our next step? Just pass on?
My recommendation is to simply take no action on it.
Okay, do we need a resolution of that effect?
No.
Just go ahead.
I will get in touch with the Yerlings and let them know our situation. Okay, it is 9:55, our next agenda item is an update on the Inland Port Authority, and-
Jerry, I also have to legally send a notice to them and write.
You do? Okay. Do you have all the information, your address and such?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The tort claims have to be filed with me. I told Jason, I said, Jason, if they legally, they got to be filed now.
Super.
I think the last time, the one took a while to wake up.
Oh, yeah, patience is not a virtue.
Patience, yeah. Patience, Dave said patience.
I make a comment that our county board assistant certainly does look sharp today. That's appropriate, she does, huh? That's very nice.
Always.
How's that different than any day?
What?
She always looks sharp.
She does, I guess that's right.
You're just not awake yet, Joe.
I think you're probably right there.
I'm right behind you. Looks like we're having some success, we need to show up.
It's recognizing those figures. I saw Dave.
That one's just, he saw the, he saw the electronic error and he left.
Turn tail and run.
It's a test.
There you go. There's Dave.
There he comes back. Your ears were burning, huh, Dave?
Oh, I knew we were going to start seeing.
He came up once over there, but.
We're sailing right along, aren't we?
We were.
There's something unplugged over there, can't read these out.
This is the Inland Port Authority Committees?
There's a USB that's just hanging there.
While we're waiting on technology, I got a question about this claim. Do we know what this is? This MCRRISE grant, labor handbook printing costs from SIRZEL?
Yeah. You know, it came up on that one. Those come through on a pretty regular basis.
I'm just curious what they are.
Did you change the input on that one, Chris?
I did not. You want me to?
No. It's supposed to automatically, it's that easy button, just.
It worked this morning.
Guess the floor is yours, Chris.
There we go.
Something you wanted to bring up, now we've got a little, we've got a little time.
You're all ears now?
We'll have to remember to give ourselves like this.
Stop this aside after.
Next time, I gotta wake that up.
Okay.
Okay. Back to our agenda, this is an update on the Inland Port Authority, and I would like to recognize our Inland Port Authority Committee, Commissioner Brunz and Weems, thank you for your work on this, and Tammy, thank you very much for the work on, that you have put into this. Chris, would you like to lead this?
I, thank you. When did we, when did they get appointed? Was I not here?
Kent appointed us in 2021, back when we first started.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you. I can't even remember the last year.
It's Gary and Tyler's on there as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in an effort to make sure that, you know, we're keeping our colleagues apprised of developments and as well as the public, we feel it's important that we probably do this on a pretty regular basis up until the port authority is actually established and they've had an opportunity to organize, and so on a monthly basis, we'll be providing an update and maybe brief some months, it may be a little bit more entailed as far as information in other months, but this month, we wanted to provide an update on the progress that we've made thus far. Commissioner Weems and I had a meeting on the 20th with several community leaders and stakeholders that are involved in the overall inland port districts, so we had people from the city of North Platte, people from the village of Hershey, the Chamber and Development Corporation, ourselves, and, and we went, went ahead and had a good conversation as long, as well as people from the Planning Commission as well, kind of talking about long-term things that we envision and how do we incorporate that with some other things that we have in the works as far as our comprehensive plan update that's underway. So we had great conversation there. One of the big priorities that Commissioner Weems and I had was making sure that we had the website published and information that was pertinent to anybody that may be considering, applying for consideration to be appointed to the Inland Port Authority, that they had a ready place to go and find consolidated information. And so that's really the bulk of what I'd like to kind of go through this morning. I want to give great thanks to Tammy, as well as Dan, with our, the firm that we've hired to help-
Molly Marketing.
Molly Marketing for our web development. They, they were instrumental in integrating the content that we put together. So if, and I know that people that are, that may be watching this live stream or later on in the record will not be able to see this on their computers, but if they want to go ahead and go to LincolnCountyNE.gov as they may be following along, that is our official county webpage. This is going to be key for the public to understand. Near the bottom of that page, on the main landing page of our county website, they will find a link for the inland port authority information and application, which Tammy is highlighting right here. If they click on that link, it will take them to another landing page. And this is really designed to be fully encompassing of great information. We have our statement that we released as far as when we actually got the designation. There's a lot of different dropdown items that are full of key information. The first one takes them to the PDF copy of the official certification document that we received from the Department of Economic Development that authorized Lincoln County's application to be designated one of the five inland ports. The next one is a link that takes them to the PDF of our actual resolution that we passed in October of last year, Resolution 22-2022-28. This essentially was our application requesting designation for the inland port to the Department of Economic Development. And there's a lot of great information in that that people can peruse. The next dropdown is kind of a synopsis of really what is a port of entry. I think that's going to be key for people to understand. That's a question that I've received from a lot of people out in the community. So this kind of in broad stroke details what a port of entry is. The next dropdown details the relationship between traditional ports of entry, which are found at coastal and border points, as well as the relationship between inland ports, which is really the direction that international trade is going and what we will enjoy here in Lincoln County. The next dropdown talks briefly about LB 156, the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act, and what Nebraska, the steps that Nebraska has taken, excuse me, to authorize inland ports here in the state of Nebraska. And there are hyperlinks in the text that people will be able to find as they go through all these dropdowns that take them to relevant points in state statute for more detailed information. So I think that that's key. We included a timeline of events to provide the public with kind of a broad understanding of how long this has taken. Obviously, this is not fully exhaustive of all the work that's gone into this, but it really does highlight key points of the process. We're dating all the way back to May of 2019, when first concept of rail access was being discussed with Union Pacific up to today. And really, we even highlighted kind of target points that we see for spring of 2023, actually getting the port authority appointed. And then early summer 2023, where that port authority will go ahead and organize, which is our hope. So we encourage people to look at that. We highlighted in the next dropdown, there's a couple excerpts from our resolution and application that detail where the actual project is in relationship to the broader Lincoln County. It narrows down and people can click on those and open them up to a larger scale and zoom in on those each. But where they are and where the project is in relation to the village of Hershey, as well as kind of an aerial satellite view of the port districts as they stand today. I do want to make sure that people understand that this board has the ability, as we infill that larger port district and the industrial rail park, that we have the latitude to go ahead and broaden those boundaries and that this port district will grow as Lincoln County grows. And I think that that's key. The next dropdown talks a little bit about the vision that we see, the committee sees, as far as the port district and the impact that that will have on Lincoln County, where we see this being integral to Lincoln County being able to harness global access to markets for our ag producers and existing business and industry, as well as enticing new business and industry to locate here in Lincoln County. There are some brief points about the next phase and the strategic plan as far as applying for a foreign trade zone and some pertinent links there that people can click on to get more information on foreign trade zones and how they relate to inland ports and what we have in the works here in Lincoln County. The next is kind of a... It drops down to talk about the economic impacts per Kemppel International Transportation Consulting, the firm that was hired by the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation and Lincoln County to conduct the economic impact analysis. It was done in conjunction with our application. There's really astonishing information there as far as how it will impact our economy here in Lincoln County moving forward, particularly with the tune of an annual economic impact approaching $2 billion annually once the project is fully built out, which is exciting. The next really gets to the heart of our next hurdle that we have as a board, which is actually finding quality individuals with key areas of expertise that we can work to appoint to the inland port authority, that governing body for the district that will work hand in hand with the county government and the local governments. In particularly, I think that we're looking for individuals to fill out that nine-member board that have key areas of expertise, being legal, financial, infrastructure construction, building, construction, transportation, logistics centered on trucking, rail and air. I think that it's key that we have somebody on that authority that has an agriculture background that can really ensure that that is front of mind as far as the impact that it's going to have for producers moving forward and offsetting some property taxes as far as that growth is concerned, as well as really the key opportunity that we have in front of us as far as getting commodities out to global markets and ensuring that we have value-added agricultural businesses locating in that port district. Another area that I think is going to be key is getting somebody on there that has planning and zoning experience as well as community to development experience. Maybe we can find somebody that has experience with the CRA, that can serve on that and knows that process of TIF through and through and all the other incentives that we have at hand for any potential business or industry that wants to invest and build in that district. Another area that I think is going to be key is finding somebody that has trade experience as well as just general business experience, making sure that we are able to pull all those areas in and really harness the opportunity that's at hand is going to be key in making sure that we do this right. So that briefly talks about that. The next dropdown talks about the powers and responsibilities that the port authority will have as set out in state statute, as well as the resolution that this board passed back in October. A lot of this is verbatim out of that resolution and state statute, but it's going to be key as far as providing that in an easy format for the public to be able to view. And then the next one talks continuation of some of those responsibilities. It also talks about the term lengths, a four-year term that is revolving and making sure that people understand the commitment that this is going to take, particularly in the initial years. It's going to be a lot of heavy lifting and making sure that we really maximize the opportunity. We talk a little bit about the qualifications. There's a couple key pieces of information. We can't have anybody appointed to this that has a financial interest in the land of the, within the boundaries of the port district. They need to be the age of majority when we appoint them, and they must be Lincoln County residents. There's also areas for conflicts of interest that are in line with state statute that I think are going to be key to make sure that we're avoiding any hurdles and stumbling blocks that are unnecessary moving forward for this port authority. So that is going to be important. And as people go ahead and peruse this, should they have interest further down, they will find it's not operational at this point. My hope is, is that by next week's meeting, we have the application finalized to bring forward to this board to go ahead and give the thumbs up on, and we can go ahead and publish that application and start receiving interested parties, you know, notification to us that they would like to serve. And we can begin those communications and the interview process and get people appointed sooner rather than later. So.
Sounds great.
I have a question with regards to the appointment in those potential conflicts. I see a person in the room, and I can think of several other, maybe in financial interest or something. And I think about potential conflicts. Let's say we expand the land, for example, the area. Maybe a potential conflict with a potential board member. Let's say we talk about financial and maybe one of the things that wants to come with inside of that port needs financial assistance. That may be a potential conflict with one of the things. Because I looked at, you know, some of the things that were important to look at, agricultural, shipping, financial, all those areas, which were really well thought out. Have you talked about how maybe we address that, the three of you, maybe?
With a nine-member board, I think there's latitude for people that down the road evolve into a conflict can step away.
Or maybe would it be, could you have an abstention on a vote or something?
Well, that's my vision.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
That would be...
Typical of any other elected board or appointed board as we have today.
In our resolution that we passed last October, as well as in state statute, there's some mention to some of those specific items. And it's clearly articulated in the language that we have, both in the resolution as well as on this webpage in that particular section. So people will be able to review that. And if they have any questions, I encourage them to give us a call. And we can get those questions answered in a timely manner that suffices and alleviates any concern that we have.
Briefly, let me expand on the board itself. The authority board, for those, and most folks don't understand this because this is brand new, but we haven't disseminated the information. But this board's going to serve in an autonomous fashion. It will not be beholden to this board. It will be their own authority, essentially.
Similar to the airport authority project.
Exactly. So we do need experienced, knowledgeable people in the community. And you referenced one or two folks maybe in the room that, one in particular, that would be a great addition to this initial board, a lot of experience in business and finance. And that's what we are seeking. We are seeking people who can put the right foot forward on this. And we have to have a seasoned eye color, a seasoned mix of folks that have business, legal, finance, experience, background, and the various things they've been involved with. And this is going to be so key because once we hand them the ball, they're it. We can weigh in, but we're not, we're no longer...
Parameters of selection, Lincoln County?
It's at large. They must be residents of Lincoln County. There's no defined districts. It is an at-large appointment. So.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't have a... No, just thank you. That's all we have to say.
Yeah, that's where I was going. Thank you. That, for me, after you called me, Chris, and asked me to look at it, very well thought out, super informative, answered a lot of questions. I went to a meeting on Saturday and had a lot of people approach me with questions, and I referred them to the website. And I think it'll really help get the explanation and the mission and the intent of the inland port authority out there. So thank you guys for your work.
I got a couple more points, Mr. Chairman. If you want to click on that link again. A lot of people that I've been talking to, and if you want to scroll down, Tammy, to some of those images, there's been some confusion as far as what does this look like? And so I made a point, inland ports aren't new to our country. We have dozens of them around the country. And I took the liberty of finding some imagery of several that I think that we here in Lincoln County can emulate. Port Greer, for example, in South Carolina is an excellent example. But there's images that people can kind of look at to see the logistical magnitude that these inland ports have. And hopefully, that will help them envision what can transpire here in Lincoln County. Another point of information that I got some great information from the Department of Economic Development this past week on, as it relates to LB 156 that was passed and how we work to get this port authority up and operational. This is going to be a capital-intensive endeavor. Luckily, we had some individuals that put forward this legislation that had that foresight. And so there's been, over this fiscal year and next fiscal year, and there's an opportunity that it may expand, actually, there's $10 million that's been put into the site and building development fund in my conversation with DED, because I had a lot of questions on that fund and those dollars and how they were appropriated and the uses of them. They are fine-tuning that program as we speak. It will come out, details on that in short order, is what I'm being told, whatever that means, as far as definition with DED, although I give them great credit for the work that they've done and how they partnered with us. The inland port authority will be the entity that applies for these funds. And these funds are for the sole purpose of helping that port authority put in the infrastructure that they need. When you take a look at the track, when you take a look at the crane operations that are going to be needed for moving containers from train to truck, that gets very expensive. And that's what the intent of these funds are. And I know that there was a bill that was introduced that expands that $50 million, I believe, but given the state of the legislature this session, who knows what's going to happen with that. But I think that that's going to be key as far as some seed funding for both our port and the port authority that Fremont Dodge County is getting implemented. And so I had some questions on how it was going to be allocated. It sounds like they're going to be looking at doing a fairly fair distribution of those funds, but that remains to be seen. I just wanted to make sure that people that are looking at this, and that's been a couple of questions that I've received from particularly a couple of individuals with a finance background is... So they have, the port authority will have the ability to bond and raise funds for that infrastructure. But I want people to understand that there's going to be some seed funding available as well to help that. And a key piece of the information is we're not looking to raise property taxes for this endeavor. So I think that that's paramount for understanding.
And if I may add, the images that you did include there helped reinforce to a lot of folks why we had interest in the Greenbrier facility and the spur coming off of Union Pacific Railroad. I think that's very key, that folks understand that this has been a long process, well thought out, and to this point, very well executed. And I think that's very important for folks to understand. It's not to add expense to the county, but to bring income in as a plan down the road.
And I think that was key with us in purchasing the Greenbrier property and having control of that spur.
Yes.
Being able to raise some revenue for the county to offset property taxes. So.
Okay, I think there's one more item on this particular agenda item that probably needs to be addressed.
So the next piece is, we have the unique opportunity to name this port. And I encourage that we do so probably before we actually appoint that nine-member authority. I took the liberty and I kind of brainstorming over some ideas, realized I'm one mile behind. And the creative aspect of it was a little bit challenging. So I took the liberty on social media to go ahead and throw it out. liberty on social media to go ahead and throw it out to people that follow my page to suggest ideas, and I've had a little over a dozen ideas kind of thrown at me, but I think that this board, it may be a good idea to do so in probably more formal fashion, is allowing the public to have some input as far as offering suggestions for this board to consider. It's a fairly unique and exciting opportunity to name something that's going to have impact for generations to come. I've had ideas thrown at me, and I'll kind of go through really quickly, ideas. Ports around the country generally have something that identifies their location in the name. I think that that's important, but it can kind of be a little bit boring when you look at some that are around the country. I think it's important for us to probably come up with something that encompasses our culture and our identity here in Lincoln County, and still at the same time provides, you know, people that may be shipping to our location, clear understanding of where their product is going. So, some of the ideas that were thrown at me were inland port Hershey, Hershey Rule inland port, Platte River inland port, Platte River port, Bill Cody Port Authority, Western Nebraska inland port, Greater Nebraska inland port, Heritage Inland Port Authority, Port of the Platte, Port of the Prairie, Port of the Plains, Flat Rock Port, I got to kick out of that one, Port North Platte, Port Linco, Lincoln County Port Authority, Western Plains Port Authority, Heartland Intercontinental Commerce Port, and Transcontinental Inland Port. It's just a handful, a couple handfuls of names. I think that if, as people are really tuning in and looking at the opportunity that exists, maybe on our social media page, we can put something out where people can kind of weigh in and provide suggestions for us to think about, and maybe we can do that here in a few weeks prior to actually appointing the nine-member authority. I mean, we have some time to get this right, but-
You've got to call something, don't we?
A fun opportunity for the public to have some way in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much for the update. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think he's got a little-
The only thing that, you know, we might think, because we do have some media coverage here, well, we have-
A media.
A media coverage here today.
There's others listening in.
But, but they're not here in the room. Perhaps one of the committee members and/or the chairman could also solicit input some other way if somebody doesn't get into our, you know, our webpage or something, maybe drop a note or whatever you think is appropriate, so that we can get some of our other viewership and readership to weigh in on that. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for all your work.
One step along those lines will take place at eight o'clock tomorrow morning on the radio.
Good, thank you.
Could I just make a suggestion that maybe those are sent to a unified place rather than just sent everywhere, so that everybody's-
To you.
That's fine, and where I was headed, just so that they can all be in one place and nobody's missed, if they have a great idea.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Agreed.
Email, okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Any other-
That's the updates that I think Kent and I have right now.
I think we're, as far as we can take you right now, Chairman.
Okay, well, that sounds great. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is Lincoln County Employee Recognition, and we have several here in my hand. So, what I would like to do, Tammy, will you take some photos of these, please? Okay, first off is Crystal Schlecht. Is that you, ma'am?
Yeah.
Did I pronounce that anywhere close to right?
Close, Schlecht.
Schlecht. First started employment in county January 2nd of 2018, so this is a five-year service. We thank you for your service, ma'am. Thank you very much. I would like to have you and I hold that. Next, I have one to Mr. Robert Veal. I admire your hair style, sir.
Thank you.
Five years of service, what's that? January 6th of 2018 is where he started. Mr. Veal, thank you very much. Okay, next up, I have Joe DeOre. And March 29th of 2018, is that correct? And you put up with that fellow over there. Thank you for your service. Okay, next up, I have Jesse Corbin. And you work in-
Up in God's-
He's on a MASH wall, but I'm on the border, so.
He's up in God's country.
My pleasure, sir. January 16th of 2018, is that correct?
That sounds about right.
Thank you for your service, sir. That's a little better over here at the camera. Thank you. Another five years of service to Mr. Tyler Schultz. That name sounds familiar.
From somewhere, right?
Where that is.
No idea. Did she get pulled over?
March, March 14th of 2018, does that sound right?
It's one.
Thank you for your service, sir. Okay, next up, ten years of service to Mr. Todd Miller. And I show at March 11th of 2013, is that correct?
That sounds right.
Thank you for your service, sir. Okay, 15 years of service, Tracy Olten. Can you put up with him that long?
I know, right?
She lives on the Cape, according to the student. January 7th of 2008. Thank you very much. Next up, I have another 15 years of service to Vicki Nichols. She wouldn't come in here.
She's hiding.
If I had to.
You guys have to get her.
If we don't, she has to.
She's gone.
So, I will let her daughter deliver this to her and tell her thank you for her ability. Okay, now we're jumping up to 30 years of service to Mr. Larry Anderson. He's not going to be here today. Does he work in your department?
Yes, he does.
You've got him on working, don't you?
Yep.
He refused to come in and get in front of the public guy.
He did not want the public guy. He just wants to do his job. He's a great employee.
Why don't you come here and accept this award? Tell me, appreciate his service. 30 years is long, though. Last but not least, 35 years of service to Patty Waunche in the district court, is that correct? Patty is not here, as I understand, so thank you very much, Patty, for the many years that you have provided service to Lincoln County, and Tammy, I will have you give the service. Let's give all of our quick-
That's awesome. 30 years.
35 years, that's longer than you.
Right, anyway, does, is she feeling okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Tyler, is there a need for a closed session?
No.
No, there isn't. So, okay, next item is, air concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives.
Take care of what you ask for, you just might get it, right?
I'm Dave Pate with the IT Department.
Good morning, Dave.
Morning.
It has been brought to my attention recently that we should be leaning more towards a paperless environment in our commissioners' meeting. I have recently received this, and just initially looked, there are going to be several large hurdles to get through this, and I am still in the research phase of doing this paperless. There are, for example, the claims that we sign, we would have to figure out a way to do that paperlessly, and there are other security concerns if we do tablets and/or laptops getting through the wireless challenge.
Boy, that's good to hear.
Go on, Joe, we have a special one for you.
So, that's where we're at right now. Does anybody have any other questions or any comments?
I had a question. The information that comes to us in our packets each week, can that be sent to us on our personal computers?
Is that information already emailed for those packets?
Just the agenda.
Just the agenda.
From time to time, we get large things, like the application we had for-
Hershey.
Our right-of-way application today, that was scanned and emailed to us via PDF.
And I know every one of you have a county email account that you have access to, and you can actually access that with your personal computer, through the county website. It'll take you right there. How hard would that be to do, Tammy? Would we have to scan everything in?
It prepares those packets.
It'd be scanning versus copying.
I will get with you on that. So, that's a step in the direction, so we can at least get started.
My only recommendation on that would be, please do run it through your county email.
Yes.
Simply open yourself up to an open records request on any personal email, or if it's on a personal machine, too, that's a possibility. I don't know that I can protect you from that.
Good point.
Sorry I brought that up. I know people that that's happened to, so, and they lost their employment.
You'll keep us updated on what your findings are in this regard?
Yes, I will, but I have, I've chatted with Dave about this a little bit, because I'm obviously one of the people that would probably end up being paperless along with you folks, and there's a number of benefits to me in that regard, just outside of this context, and I know a little bit more about technology than most people. I don't buy computers, I build them, and so, I want to get here.
Yes.
But I want to get here in a way that makes sense for the taxpayers and for everybody involved, because there are going to be some logistical hurdles to conquer. But I have the full faith in Dave. I will be working closely with Tyler anyway.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll work on those hurdles when we come across them.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, have a good day.
Any other elected officials, department heads, or representatives that wish to bring concerns to us? Sir, would you state your name for us, please?
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff.
He saw me taking my coat off and said, shoot, he's not leaving. Since I gave you an update on the cattle seizure, I thought I'd give you an update on where we're at with it. The cattle sold a week ago tomorrow. The sale went really well. I've had some people wanting me to sell their cattle. And, you know, considering the quality of cattle, some of the went through there with a lot of blinds and prolapses and cripples, and to have a $960 head sale was pretty impressive, really. Just short of $1 million, and there's been some confusion. I've had a local businessman accuses of stealing a man's money. That isn't the case. It's just a normal sale. The expenses will come out, the typical feed and yardage and labor and trucking, and the rest of it goes back to the owner. And considering there was almost a million-dollar sale, and I think the expenses will end up being 130, 40,000. So, you know, it's, and if he'd have sold them himself, that's the money that would have been spent. There was nothing taken out of this for anything outside of the normal, so it was, I like to call it rehoming the cattle, not seizing the cattle, even though that's a technical term. They're all in a better place and getting feed and water now. It's amazing how well they did on, you know, 14 days of feed. If we'd have sold those cattle the day they came in, the sale would have been extremely different, even though we had some that died at the sale barn. We had a number of births, and we ended up with more cattle than what we took in there. So, the whole thing, I think, was successful for everybody, including the owner. They'll be able to reorganize and hopefully get on with their lives.
In a different industry.
Maybe in a different industry, yeah.
Can you tell us how many animals were sold?
Roughly 1,150.
Wow. And do you have a count on the number of animals that perished?
Not exact, no. I think, I think the numbers will be near the 200. Well, we have records that the rendering plant picked up 472 in the last 13 months.
What was that number again?
472 or 92, and that didn't include what died up in the pastures, because they didn't go pick those up. So, huge, huge death loss, but, you know, those, the type of cattle they buy aren't, you would expect a higher than normal death loss. I would expect 10% rather than the standard 2%, my opinion only. But anyway, that's where we're at with that. It's nothing that was out there, so I thought you guys might want to know that, so.
Yeah, it's very nice to have that taken care of, and for my professional career, it strikes pretty deep when that happens.
Yes.
And for those individuals that may not have understood the process and how you're taking this man's livelihood and his living and stuff, this is a job you wanted to have, is it, Sheriff?
No, these are friends of mine.
That's correct, and I hope people understand that.
So, finishing that up, we had our inspection of Jail Standards last week, our annual inspection. That was, that went very well. The gentleman from Jail Standards rated our jail as one of the top in the state, if not the top in the state, not only the condition of our facility, but the operation of the facility and the programs we offer. He said, exceed many larger jails.
Super.
So.
Was that Dan?
No, Dan retired.
Oh, okay.
So, the inspection was way faster.
I was going to say, because that was the next conversation. How long did the inspection take, Sheriff?
Dan likes to talk. He's a wonderful guy.
Well, I would not be surprised by that. When we did our quarterly jail inspection last week, all of us came out of there and our guests with a sense of pride with what has been developed over there, the facility that you have and the people that you have working with you. It was absolutely a delight to show that to our guests that joined us on that, on that tour that we made, and Commissioner Anderson, from Keith County. Yeah, congratulations to you and your facility and the fine properties you work over there and the people that you have working with you. there and the people that you have working with you.
You know, back in 2008 or '09, whenever it was, and we were touring other facilities as far as ways, Georgia trying to come up with a floor plan and what flowed. And I was amazed at the facilities we looked at that were less than 10 years old and the condition they were in. They were... I'd be embarrassed to think that I was handling tax dollars the way they were. I think the way we take care of this facility lasts a lot of years compared to what some of those are. There were some of them we went to that were less than 10 years old, and they had to wedge the doors open. They were filthy and the paint missing. And, you know, my staff tries really hard to keep it looking like it did the day it was built, so.
And it certainly does. And I'm glad I only visit your facility on a quarterly basis, but I've been very impressed each time, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
And you have a revenue source there, too?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what it'll end up being for the fiscal year. It'll be a little less since we lost the state, but we're working hard to get more federal. And as you saw, we're getting more surrounding counties. And so, we're...
Sheriff, could you share with us a little bit? Maybe you can't, but where those prisoners went that the state took back and maybe the facility that was built and what some of those capacities are? Do you have that up to help you?
I don't have those numbers. I don't know how they happened to go back to Tecumseh that was 100 and some percent full. Because according to our paperwork, all but three, I think, went to Tecumseh. And I don't know where all the Tecumseh prisoners went, but there were a lot of inmates that were farmed out around the state that all went back to Lincoln. So, I don't know if that's something that'll change and will get some of those people back. I don't know.
Even with their new facility, I always understood that they were still well over capacity. So, I was just curious if maybe we'd see those people again. I didn't know.
Yeah. You know, we enjoyed having those people. They can not only create some revenue, but you don't have to deal with the detoxification and the anxiousness and the suicidals and all of the stuff that you do with the short-termers. They're just really easy. And, you know, if they want to be here or they don't want to go back, so they behave themselves. It's just kind of a treat to have them, actually.
Yeah.
And it's the same way with the fedals. They're just savoring their time until they're good done. They don't want trouble.
Your staff takes a lot of pride. It's pretty obvious when they walk through the facility and, I mean, they take ownership. And that's a great culture to have. That's hard to get, but it's there.
I think over the years, we've done some good selection as far as supervisors, and they work hard to keep things the way they want it. It soon becomes a motivation of their own, so.
It's pretty obvious. They're on board, that's for sure. And Commissioner Anderson was impressed.
Yeah.
He was.
We're as solid with supervisors right now as we probably ever have been.
And in my short time, I've witnessed the great working relationship that your people have with the building and grounds crew and with getting some of the inmates to participate in, you know, the fixing and the painting. And I think it's great.
You know, when the public knows that there's inmates that are working, like in the summer when they're working outside, I get tons of good feedback that they're actually... You know, it's good for the inmate. I've had a number of inmates that have came up to me after they got out and said, "Sheriff, you taught me how to work. I enjoy it."
Very nice.
So...
Great partnership.
So, it's good for the most part.
Yeah. It sounds great. We appreciate the service that your department provides to this county and to the state as far as that goes.
They'll be back. They'll have to go somewhere.
I would think.
One thing that did come up, though, that van that you purchased, did we have any other color than purple?
We can see it coming down the road.
It's easy to see, but...
Once they know it's around, it's pretty hard to be discreet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That was Raleigh's choice.
Oh, that was Raleigh. Raleigh wanted to go.
He actually rattled candy at that color when he got it on.
Now, that vehicle is working out well?
So far, yeah. We've put a few miles on it.
Super.
And if we've been working on a contract with getting some fedals out of Colorado and Wyoming, so we'll be hauling them a little bit. So, like I said, that's all paid mileage and paid labor, so, type of federal, so.
That's a plus on that. You get your mileage back.
Yeah.
That's good.
And you get occupants for your bed and breakfast.
Well, yeah. And hopefully, we can wear that van up pretty soon and get a different color.
Color's all right. I just was wondering if we had any choice in the matter. I don't think we did.
No, no.
Thank you.
Has a bumper sticker, "I love you, you love me, we're a happy family."
Barney? Isn't that Barney, the big purple dinosaur?
Yeah, yeah.
I remember those days.
Caricature of Barney on the front.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff Kramer.
So, Becky, you know we're having a follow-up meeting with the fire folks on Wednesday. Joe and I are, and Tyler, and maybe you. I don't know.
Is this a trick question?
No, it's not a trick question, but just so the board understands, Joe and you are the only ones that have historical perspective.
Oh, not me. I missed a lot of those meetings.
Those guys in Percy have a different opinion than... It's like, your cohort, when they started this many years ago, can you tell the board how many years ago that that program evolved? And maybe Joe can weigh in, because I walked into the meeting really not understanding how we got there. And as I told them, I'm not... I'm not averse to the intent to help them out, but I'm just trying to figure out how we got where we're at. And the other thing I didn't even know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, but our conversation was such that they have not received this stipend for two budget cycles or one?
We did not pay this budget year.
This, so just the one budget year, okay.
Twenty... Yeah, because the contract ended. So, they did not get paid much, I remember.
Okay.
The first records I have were like 2003, 2004.
But it would have ended prior to us setting the budget, right?
I had put money in the budget, but just estimating what I thought it would increase, but the only thing we paid out of there has been the city.
So, it's there. There are funds there to some degree.
Yes. I just estimated.
So...
In a few minutes, we might see what that amount is.
So, Tammy, did you get feedback on who actually is coming down?
I did not.
Nobody clarified who showing up. It's nine o'clock. Wednesday, okay.
Is that Wednesday here?
Yeah. Yeah, Tammy reached out to Rory because he was kind of the lead dog up there last Monday night. And I was hopeful that we'd see on that smaller group, I asked for a smaller group, make it a little less cumbersome and not a lot of... I won't call it frivolous, but extraneous dialogue that's really not going to help figure out what we do.
Were all those districts represented?
Five. I was hoping Mr. Swanson from Walts would be one. He seems to have a great grasp of how they've recovered their halls. They're like at a 90% recovery of...
I don't know, but I don't know if that's necessarily the fire. That might just be all that we gave. Maybe that was library back then. Maybe that was senior, all that stuff.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, I suggested that they share that information with the other departments.
It's a percentage.
But if it applies, it's not a great percentage if you recover 90%.
Right, right.
Which is tremendous on that, if you can get it for that.
And that's how people realize that.
Well, so, okay, so, just the one guy in the wilderness, like I tell you, I said, I see an overall wish that he would fully exercise the tax authority, first of all, community court law, number one. And all the one states that's been done, Sutherland, Matt, nobody else. Second would be, certainly if I ever recover those four, you know, and you incur endless costs, because some do and some are... Whatever. And I said, "That's..." I said, "My perception is board member, you know, that's what you're asking. That's for money that you're not recovering." And I said, "Reiterate that they have the ability to capture that if they become more aggressive." So, I said, "That's a good idea." And of course, the third would be just, you know, coordinating all those expenses and maybe take a hard look.
I would also be interested in finding out how the MFO funds they just receive from insurance, how that's impacting their budget and that they're not capable of... We're going to shoot our budget out, we could do the next dollars amount in life.
I'm asking, the MFO thing is something I have, I don't... Good to see you, Ron, with the comments you're throwing out that it's all or none.
Thank you, Sheriff.
It's all or none on MFO.
Where they all take the same 3% or whatever it is?
It's 3 cents, but they all had to agree to it.
Yeah. So, they do. They have their meeting with... Oh, it's my understanding that they meet along with North Flat or North Flat Rural, and between them decide how that percentage is going to play out. It's... I haven't been to those meetings, but that would be my understanding.
And there seems to be a disconnect between what we do in North Flat, the fire department with...
ALS.
CLX, basic life support. There's a disconnect on the perception that we've done something there in their favor versus... And I can't speak to that because I don't have a grasp of all that. That's what I will... The rest of people involved in this discussion will bring that to the table if I don't have it. Grasalization or explanation of all of that, which they just don't know. But at any rate, I'm not sure. I'm not sure a lot of car districts know the graph of that either. From what I have feedback, I got a week ago. I also would say that what's thrown out as hockey player faces for a start would be if you did, if in fact, I made no promises at all, it's assuming that the board has sympathy to do something, reinstate something. How would you put a number on value of that? Put it for one, picture party, said, "Assume for one, you have autonomous power. How much money would you incorporate?" Well, I don't know. Neither do I. There you have it. Not going to be equality. There's going to be disparity if in fact, there's a program. So, understand that. So, not everybody's going to be on the same page on operations, the same diet, if there's a program at all. And I kind of labored that funny little bit. The proposal was, for what, it was like, okay, let's just based on our district values and just the five districts within the county. Well, that's ignoring, roughly goes into frontier, and wealthy was not represented. That ignores the fact that, I believe, the, perhaps, maybe the Warren district reaches up in the Grandin area, maybe not. But I do know Dawson comes in, I remember I mentioned to the inside, certain staple comes in.
It's mainly wealthy. Yeah, there are multiple ones that come across the county line that are partners.
So, if you took that premise by which you were going to say, "Okay, we decided we're going to reinstate something," based on it, you're swiping departments that are contributing to covering our act or protection of their property. You're not giving them anything, so. But nevertheless, it's thrown out as a starting point, especially. Okay, well, I guess we can spin that next Wednesday, this person next Wednesday specifically.
This Wednesday, right?
Yeah. But he wouldn't, he did not call, so I asked Tammy to pursue that communication and pin them down since he wanted sooner or later. I said, "Fine."
Is or isn't, you say?
Is a bad idea. Well, you know, it's a huge disparity between what you see those numbers, but I will raise, your pittance, your pittance compared with what historically registered, so I don't know.
Percy.
And at any rate, they did trust me on the acute advanced life support, the one fellow, versus basic life support. And I said, "How many of you have that people?" And the answer is zero.
I was going to say, they better not say they do because they don't.
No. But again...
They don't have any of them?
None of them.
North Flat is the only one, which is what our agreement was for, was for ALAs, not ALAs. Let's say we're talking about the ALAs. That agreement, clarify that for me. Is that countywide that they will serve?
Yes.
The entire point of paying the city of North Flat is to make that service available everywhere.
Everywhere, thank you. I wished I had at that point, but I didn't know.
Playing devil's advocate, though, in the outline areas, a unit from either Brady or Sutherland could get to someone at those far stretches of the county quicker than...
They do, and they intersect halfway, wherever they're at. They send them from both ways, and then they transport.
I pointed, I said, "I don't care who, I'll point target here, be, you know, basic or whatever, it's better than nothing. Playing out there as a factor, grab your horse, dump your..." I said, "I get that, but still, it's not the same character." And I did not clarify it. Well, in fact, because I really did that hard, because I'm like, "Oh, we're doing something in North Flat, we want to do it in anybody else."
No, I will make sure they understand we're not doing something in North Flat, we're purchasing a service for North Flat, that we're making it available for them.
Yeah, thank you. So, that's why I kind of want to talk about this at the table because I'm a stream of draft. I learned a whole lot more. I knew more than 90 minutes ago.
Well, thanks for taking my hand, Bill.
Well, there was a disconnect there that, and I called, I just said, "Somebody drop me off, I just need..." Because we're standing in a meeting, and they said, "Somebody pipe up, say, 'How about March and...'" And I said, "Well, it would work for me." Well, I didn't tell Tyler, I didn't tell Joe.
Well, boy, am I glad of that.
No, he's one ear and now the other. So, you know, of course, I got beat over the head, you know, when I'm there in the forest, I said, look, this, you guys were supposed to take two or three days in the county to do this. And I said, your conversations have been with Tyler. I made a bad assumption, the follow-up conversation with this meeting was with Tyler. That's my fault, I made a assumption, I accept the responsibility, apologize, that's why I'm here, here what you have. So I did point that out, that anybody dropped the ball, I mean, because I heard it in passing in the hall. And we didn't broke up, and I didn't bring up Tyler or Joe, or, hey, I'll, I can't, and say, hey, coordinate this. I said, no, you know, whatever, so, hey, they didn't turn that on me. They let me leave peacefully.
That's good.
And so it was, overall, it was a good conversation because, um, they all got to deal with their concerns. We don't feel that, yeah, we don't have that concern. So wind still be the heavy lifting, so I'll be glad to have two heavy hitters around.
I said, you guys, an information from two thousand through two thousand four, there's all the minutes, really, I don't think there's this.
Okay.
And it appears in here, at least then, the MFO funding then was to be used for equipment only, they could not use it for other things, it had to be equipment. No, without change was the height mark.
Well, anyway, different ways, kind of hit it, it kind of reinforced it, you know, I think that's the perception, the board wants to use their government, you know, tax, like, whether it's your authority. Let's face it, if you think paramount in your district, then you should be able to raise enough funds, um, the ability that you have in power material. And rather than come to us and say, well, we would, we would, we want to be against tour, they said, so you'd rather we give them off, what's that like? What's, versus, you know, your district, you know, it's still tax money.
And you said Sutherland uses theirs to the full authority?
They told me they have bank stuff. They're, and I'm also told anti-drug, if you get down, like, for any part of building and all that shiny stuff, they got pretty obvious why, you know. Good or bad, I mean, I must perceive these there that have been made in years or whatever, but you'd be able to verify that still, right? It's still where the levees are, where the levees are, I see a maximum of them.
Yeah, I mean, they've all been three cents for, except for Wallace, Wallace is the only one that's ever dropped theirs. So they've been three cents and they have four forms.
And that's, it was just piecemeal, nothing, structure spreadsheet, see all the numbers, but, and go to it, it's like, they're doing the best job of recovering. Falls. Yeah, falls. Lynn's wants to.
Now, Wallace is the only one that's ever dropped two, less than three cents.
Recovery, or, or.
Yeah. Now, do I, do I understand or remember the statement that Sutherland has far larger number of accidents calls? Do I know that?
Well.
And I, you know, I'm not a good milk taker.
You also have the nursing home.
Yeah, the nursing home, they said the rest area, they get a large number of calls out there.
Take out that.
That's, that's a key piece of information.
And they got heavier calls.
That's a key, key piece of information that we need to dissect from all these organizations is what is your calls that are outside of jurisdictional boundaries of the, and actually out in the rule. What does that cost the way? Because that's, or not, the county's not the only political subdivision that can provide additional funding to these organizations, each village came too.
Well, but they did point out, villages have very low evaluation, so if you go that route, we're going to get. The ones that are probably in better shape, who wants to recognize that, and work together and merge. Really, it makes sense. All of them are recent, I need heavy hitters, they're going to see.
Yeah, one, one sitting over at Flexing.
One there, one there.
And another one over there.
Because they have history on this, and I don't. Thank you, well, good luck with board. I'm going to show up the next week, so it'll be there for the whole, there's a lot of, Tyler. Sounds good, anything else?
Uh, I would like to give a quick update and some feedback on the E E E C B D G topic that we discussed. At our West Central Wednesday night board meeting that week, they took a look at the, at the program and were pointing the staff at for us, and so these paying members of the presidency. So they had their staff meeting on Tuesday of last week and called me in the afternoon and said, um, yeah, I explained to them that Judy Clark and Tammy have some emails out to the program waiting for a response. And Amber said, that's one of their areas of expertise is working with those type of grants. And she said, um, usually if there's a matching fund, it's the second line of the program, they always mention it first. She said that she would be willing to work with us on just putting together the pre-application paperwork. She said, even though the website says they will report, give us a feedback in forty-eight hours, we have not had any feedback yet. And she said, that's not that uncommon. But she said, no harm, no foul, if you read the pre-application paperwork and submit it, and then other information comes to light in the meantime, you can always register all that. And we said, little, she, she said she would help us with the pre-application as a policy. And then if the application, she said, the, the, it's non-competitive, the monies aren't even allocated. She would not understand any reason why we would want to do that on the table. But the pre-application deadline is April twenty eighth. So we're thinking about it, I'm going to ask her that probably to be back on the agenda next Wednesday, because it will take them a long time just fill out the pre-application requirements. This is the energy efficiency.
Oh, thank you.
Um, and, and if anybody else has any ideas that you'd like to bring forth about use for the money, let's talk about that too.
I think the shops.
I think the weatherproofing, and that's what Amber said, a program like that, the voucher program is very easy to use. And I feel like we get some info about that. And I, and I think we have needs all over the country, so building in rounds if Kent would like to meet with the, you know, once we move. And just go out and do some assessments and see where the biggest need is and start with that.
One other thing we need to think about are federal grants, I know that, we have a dinner in the past and neither has our congressional representative. First, which is, is, uh, but each congressional district gets, I think, five grants, million dollars, two million dollars, hundred million dollars, four million dollars. There is no amount, it's just whatever basically you need. There really aren't, really any strong parameters on it, they just designate it, I mean, the federal government system, you know, there it is, use it. Most of ours don't get used. I let the timeline go by this year, didn't get on it early enough, but for next year, I think the grant application is like, um, March eighteenth or twentieth. We need to start planning now so that we can have that ready, get some of those dollars too.
I was talking with Adrian about that, um, there, the community investment funds, they used to be called earmarks. That's the dollars that you're referring to.
Community.
Community investment funding.
Exactly.
We're talking about a large-scale ask for infrastructure, potentially a west bypass, roads for lane that goes to.
But you have to have all of them ready and.
Exactly.
Ready to pose, so I need to start ahead of time, maybe spend some dollars, but we're thinking about, because those are usually no brainers and they usually go to all of our big brothers and sisters either way, who are smart enough to have somebody writing those and being ready for the program.
Is that, is that going to require a grant writer to do that?
We're, we're working on all aspects of that.
Gary has a grant writer in his office.
No, he does not, but John Cannon is hiring a grant writer, uh, they're working through the details on whether it's going to be for like the big eight or just finishing western counties. Because we talked for this specific funding mechanism, the need for us to have a grant writer, we think it'd be a good idea for them to provide that service as part of our views, so.
Just about every organization that I've spoken to who has a project that they feel like they're sponging out there for, having a grant writer on staff or, or even employing one immediately is, is tough.
That's a big concern.
Yeah.
That's why we're looking.
Highly specialized.
Talents in Lincoln.
It's, it's.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they recognize the benefit to.
Is there a limit on this? You said, community investment, does that include projects outside of the community, like, uh, road projects?
It's, well, it's, it's.
Community.
That's just the broad name of the program, they're earmark dollars is what they are. And the only limit is, is it's like one percent discretionary spending of the federal government.
And the, they're so huge, it's just mind-blowing. Like I said, you should have talked to me, I was working with, it's fiscal guy, just didn't get it done over the last couple of months, and so, we'll just start with that.
So, we can tap into. I'm surprised they didn't bring it up, because I've had conversations about it with this staff at office for six, seven months.
Yeah, it's in fact, um, anyway.
What did that mean to you?
Yeah, right.
What? Yeah.
Was that a no?
You, you got anything on that?
Anything else, well, it's. Guys, one and six next week.
During, during.
Who's next week?
And I have verified the legal, there's, or, Jason has the printout to happen.
He's been also monitoring that thing that he pushed the base now, he should have.
I never know what, oh, yes, I will.
Anything else?
Dave said, if you can accomplish this, it's a great thing to have.
Something else, I think, I'll touch on that.
I like this.
Something for now.
If I, if I can, I'll say, sure, I'll set some information.
Well, yeah, Joe here, Tyler here, and you, like, you've all got them, you've all got, I think, I don't think, I'd like to see, like, for you to have them, two, three, so, which I did not, I did not, like, a long playlist.
And have you, it's not, you're familiar with the medical, like, part of it?
No, I have not. Okay, I'm not talking to any of them. Um, but that's head of your disconnect, so they just say, well, I don't know, I just follow that. I don't, and I'm not going to say I made this, so, because sometimes you think you did, you didn't.
Yeah.
But I thought I made that, I did more about early getting money.
Right.
But I may not.
So unfortunately, my family had personal experience with a car accident in North Flat, and we responded. And they were great about working with us on getting the insurance filing and collecting from the insurance company on that recovery fees for ambulance.
Well.
And I think that's one of the topics that the Sutherland and Hershey fire departments said is so hard for them and overwhelming is the billing plus the insurance portion.
See, that, and, and there's the other part of this, I can't fathom, I can't correct them. Why do we have, and I'm not saying it's not a factor, because it is, heck, he's got hard numbers to say, these people are getting, right? These people come after my bulldog, and I hear these car drivers go, oh, they just, we couldn't collect it. I said, I told him that the other day, I said, I don't, I don't get this, I don't see how these ambulances are just going to beat us over the head and pull this off, and literally extract blood. And you, you're telling me you can't collect, you can't recover, and I said, that's.
From our personal, so, you know, the hospital took care of filing everything as far as the medical care once he got to the hospital. But the, the ambulance bill just kind of fell in this dead zone. And nobody wanted to help us with it, even, and I have great personal insurance, but, so dealing with the people at the, at the fire department here, they're the ones that took the bull by the horns and helped us communicate with the insurance company. Or it would have just been denied. And, and there was nobody advocating for payment of that bill. So I think having a company that does your billing and your filing with the insurance would be paramount for the fire departments for getting referrals.
Something's, something doesn't connect the dots, because again, how come these annual services hold you accountable and have no way over them? And our partners, you say, well, can't collect, can't cover a fee, I, I don't get this, I.
I think it's because they just don't feel like they have the, the capability of employing somebody to do that, that if they would all pool their resources.
Equally, they don't want that blood on their hands.
Right, you are correct.
That's exactly what I think. And most of those people's expertise is in different fields.
Yeah, and they're volunteers.
Yeah.
Right, right, absolutely. And it can be daunting when it comes to insurance.
Did tend to live to that point, you know, I can tell it's more sensitive than a group like you see if, if you were doing a better job of managing, who are you, maximizing what is what you do. Because they all, in places, we don't have enough funding, okay? Well, there your first step, the second is recovering this. Again, I, back to them, law, they go, you, you don't. It's a service, you know, it's beyond what you're paying.
Hello. Yeah, that's a.
It's the equivalent of, my, my, we pay, we pay, we pay slowly, you know, what, because I told them, I paid taxes, but I said, no, your neighbor pays taxes, they do their own. Now, you expect me to subsidize you, you know, and.
Everybody around you being the way you should do it.
Their own. I said, yes, you pay taxes, but so is both. You implemented something beyond basic service. You should pay for, for certain value, fixed value, maybe rush, or time, or material, which is what we did. To me, the ambulance service is the same thing.
It's no different, if people are saving, you know, it's kind of, you, you're part of it.
So that's something that I need, I need some, some part of.
And those audits can be submitted on insurance, right?
Does our mass of covering that, or we're just talking about major stuff with mass?
Mass is any inventory transfer, either air, like air.
Airplane.
That's for a county.
Yeah. But that does, they're not, they're not all on that, or, most people are not.
That's, that's not even something you address on Thursday or Friday.
Anything else, well, good luck, is it? Can we peel that onion, like, you talked about that all day, there's some questions. You don't have the answer to that. Got a break, Greg? Anything else come before the board, Becky, do you have anything for us? Okay. Well, good luck in your name gathering, in the board committee name gathering.
Well, on that, do you want to be date, so I was going to just put a little add paper.
Um.
How's that going to be for women?
Well, well, this, you'll consider it off. I didn't get that far, I was figuring.
You've already got my vote. I like, I like one from the very beginning that I still like, so.
What's that?
The naming of Port of the Plains.
Of the plains?
What, uh.
Greater Nebraska.
No, Prairie, Linnville Prairie, Port of the Plains, or something like that.
Linnville's, it confused you, like, in the, in the air.
No, I think it was just Port of the Plains.
I, well, that's the first.
I like Prairie.
Well, I think the logo, I like Trager, that last one, because you're, you're trying to give some regional impact. I was saying, that's on a, you know, I kind of suggest that you're out there, because we're always out here by ourselves.
We want to have some sort of a timeline that, hey, we'd like to. Do we want to have some sort of a timeline that, uh, hey, we'd like to hear something before the end of April or something like that?
Unfortunately, you've made all the decisions you're going to make for one day.
Thank you for leaving us on time.
I stated a few weeks in our meeting, so that's what we just keep with a few weeks.
That's all we're going with.
Can I do that by April 1st, this one officially?
It's a few weeks.
I don't agree, I don't have an opinion.
Oh, that's, how?
Well, that'd be your discretion.
How about the application?
Uh, I stated in the meeting that I hope that we would have the application and hope this, too, because it's the timeline, figuring out the, the program.
It's a billable application?
Those are going to stay open until they're filled, so.
Yes, but having them posted.
So I'm creating it, it's a billable application, so I purchase the software, which I need to do, without working the software, but.
Is Adobe Pro now?
Yes, I am.
Sweet.
So, uh, that would be a agenda item this next week.
Okay.